Councilmember Nekano?
Here.
Councilmember Vienna?
Here.
Councilmember Weber will be joining us shortly.
All right, council will go into a closed session meeting to discuss four cases which include public employee appointment in a conference with labor negotiators related to the city manager position, liabilities, claims, and conference with real property negotiators related to the San Dimas golf course. Any reports will occur after the closed session. Is there any members of the public who has wished to have anything to say?
Mayor, before we do the public comment, we have Councilmember Vienna here today appearing remotely, and that's under a special exception in the Brown Act. So, the Brown Act requires him to make a statement about why he's appearing remotely and who is in the room with him. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Vienna to make that statement.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, council, members of the public. I am actually attending this meeting remotely for just cause pursuant to the Brown Act. My just cause is I am away on official business for the County of Los Angeles, which is my employer, which forces me in this situation to need to participate remotely. Thank you. Oh, and there is no one present in the room with me. I am alone.
Mr. Mayor, I know we were going to discuss whether we want to take this. The liability claims item, the individual from our JPIA is available via the phone today until seven. However, if we're able to table it to the next meeting, he'll be able to be here in person if you'd like that.
Council's, would you guys like to address that?
No, this was an item that was requested when we were talking about that liability claim and the consideration. Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Councilmember Nekano.
I have no preference either way.
Okay, well, with your concurrence, we'll table it for the next meeting.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Brian, you okay with that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then we will adjourn out.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. It's weird procedure today because of this remote appearance. But for the public comment period, if anybody would like to call in to give public comment, the information and the phone number to do that is on the face of the agenda. But since no one has and it appears that there is no one here to give public comment, now we can adjourn into the closed session.
Okay? All right, we'll adjourn off into the conference room, and then we'll come back in time for the seven o'clock meeting. You're welcome.
Okay, John.
Good morning. The San Dimas City Council meeting for August 27, 2024 will come to order. Madam City Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mayor Bader.
Here.
Councilmember Bertakos.
Here.
Councilmember Nakano.
Here.
Councilmember Vienna.
Here.
Oh, he's not for this.
He's not here for this meeting.
Councilmember Weber.
Here.
Record will reflect that there are four council members in attendance for a quorum.
I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just like to take a moment to apologize to the community for our late start. Unfortunately, we had a closed session meeting that needed to be continued and what matters very pressing to the city. So at this point, not in time, we'll move on and we'll go to oral communications. All members of the audience?
I need to give the report on this.
You're going to give the report now?
Yes, thank you. The City Council met in closed session before the open session tonight. There were four items on the printed closed session agenda. The City Council discussed Items 1 and 2 and gave direction to staff, but did not make any reportable action on those items. On Item 3, which is the liability claims item, that closed session was not held and will not be held tonight. Item number 4 is a real property negotiations closed session. We didn't get to that item before the open session tonight, so we're going to go back into closed session after the open session tonight for that item.
Okay, we'll go to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item, agenda item, except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on this posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to a staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards?
Mayor Valerie Munoz with San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority is here to speak.
Also, Mayor, while she's walking up, I needed to announce because we had a council member participating earlier in this meeting remotely, members of the public are able to call in for this particular meeting for public comment periods using the phone number and the ID information that's on the front of the agenda.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Valerie Munoz. You're representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. I'm also a council member for the city of La Buente. We represent the city with non-pumping rights. First of all, I want to say I'm really glad that I'm able to be here in person. We usually meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, and my meeting was canceled. So I said, hey, let me stop in San Dimas and say hello.
Thank you.
So as your representative, just wanted to give you just a general overview if anyone is not really familiar with the Water Quality Authority. The state legislature enacted this agency back in 1992, and the sole purpose is for water cleanup in the San Gabriel Basin. You have, I believe, it's Golden State Water Company who does pull from the San Gabriel Basin. And our goal is we don't sell water. We just provide funding for our water providers here in the basin to provide clean water for our communities. And our goal is to hold our responsible parties responsible for that and with federal funding, prop money, and appropriations to pay for these services. And our goal is to keep ratepayers' funding and requirements low so it's not passed on to our communities. Like I said, I've been your representative on this board for several years now, appointed by councils that I represent in the cities in San Gabriel Valley. And I just wanted to personally just say hello if there's any questions or if you would like to have any information or questions regarding the Water Quality Authority. We also are open to provide quick tours to give you a general idea. Prior to me being on this board, I just knew you turn the water on and water comes out. I didn't know the extent of the importance of clean water and how it affects our communities. So just general information that you're able to pass
Okay, John. The San Dimas City Council meeting for August 27, 2024 will come to order. Madam City Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mayor Bajar.
Here.
Councilmember Protakos.
Here.
Councilmember Nakano.
Here.
Councilmember Vienna. Oh, he's not for this.
He's not here for this meeting.
Councilmember Weber.
Here.
Record will reflect that there are four council members in attendance for a quorum.
I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just like to take a moment to apologize to the community for our late start. Unfortunately, we had a closed session meeting that needed to be continued and what matters very pressing to the city. So at this point in time, we'll move on and we'll go to oral communications. All members of the audience?
I need to give the report on this.
You're going to give the report now?
Yes, thank you. The City Council met in closed session before the open session tonight. There were four items on the printed closed session agenda. The City Council discussed items one and two and gave direction to staff, but did not make any reportable action on those items. On item three, which is the liability claims item, that closed session was not held and will not be held tonight. Item number four is a real property negotiations closed session. We didn't get to that item before the open session tonight, so we're going to go back into closed session after the open session tonight for that item.
Okay, we'll go to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item, agenda item, except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on this posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to as staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards?
Mayor Valerie Munoz with San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority is here to speak.
Also, Mayor, while she's walking up, I needed to announce, because we had a council member participating earlier in this meeting remotely, members of the public are able to call in for this particular meeting for public comment periods using the phone number and the ID information that's on the front of the agenda.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Valerie Munoz. You're representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. I'm also a council member for the City of La Buente. We represent the city with non-pumping rights. First of all, I want to say I'm really glad that I'm able to be here in person. We usually meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, and my meeting was canceled. So I said, hey, let me stop in San Dimas and say hello.
Thank you.
So as your representative, just wanted to give you just a general overview. If anyone is not really familiar with the Water Quality Authority, the state legislature enacted this agency back in 1992, and the sole purpose is for water cleanup in the San Gabriel Basin. You have Gold, I believe it's Golden State Water Company, who does pull from the San Gabriel Basin. And our goal is, we don't sell water. We just provide funding for our water providers here in the basin to provide clean water for our communities. And our goal is to hold our responsible parties responsible for that and with federal funding, prop money, and appropriations to pay for these services. And our goal is to keep ratepayers' funding and requirements low, so it's not passed on to our communities. Like I said, I've been your representative on this board for several years now, appointed by councils that I represent in the cities in San Gabriel Valley. And I just wanted to personally just say hello. If there's any questions or if you would like to have any information or questions regarding the Water Quality Authority, we also are open to provide quick tours to give you a general idea. Prior to me being on this board, I just knew you turn the water on and water comes out. I didn't know the extent of the importance of clean water and how it affects our communities. So just general information that you're able to pass on to your residents. I'm available. I left cards with my personal contact information, and I'm more than happy to meet anybody at any time to talk about water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Nora Chan from the San Dimas Library.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and staff. So since the summer is over and kids are back to the school, so I just want to remind everyone that the library, we do have the baby storytime on every Thursday at 10:00 a.m. for kids, babies, zero to 18 months. And we do have also Smartypens Storytime on every Friday, also at 10:00 a.m. It's for kids, they can, they will enjoy books, songs, rhymes, and movement while learning the school readiness skill and having fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, those were all the speaker cards presented.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council requests separate discussion. I have a couple of council members who are pulling some items.
Yes, I'd like to pull a consent item number five, please.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item six and eight for questions.
Thank you.
What were the items again? Six and?
Six and eight.
And five.
And five. Five, six, and eight. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to consent calendar one, two, three, four, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All those items are approved, four, four, zero. Okay, then we'll move on to Ms. Protakos.
All right, we're going to go in numerical order. So I had a couple of questions. First of all, I would like to thank Lily for the wonderful report put together and for the public to know that when I come to meetings, I put a lot of time ahead of time to do my research, to ask my questions. So the things that I'm bringing up right now are to just get some clarification and just for the benefit of the community. So item number five is approved program guidelines for CDBG restaurant assistance. Thank you for coming up. So within this, one of my questions was, this is money that is funded largely by the county. When our restaurants, which I'm going to consider applicants, are applying to get this forgivable loan, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing that we're able to provide, are they competing countywide, or is there a certain number set for the city?
It's the money that's been allocated to the City of San Dimas in January. We did those allocations based on the amount that we got. I think it was 166,000. So we funded the restaurant program for economic development. We did the housing rehab program and then the youth scholarship program, based on council's recommendations.
Fantastic. And it appears that this program is meant to promote economic growth and to promote more job opportunities within San Dimas. The items that I just wanted to clarify and discuss with you is that new applicants are considered, or new, excuse me, new restaurants are considered an applicant for this. And I find that wonderful, to bring some new restaurants into the community, and they would be able to get some funds and bring jobs. One of my questions is that for existing restaurants, they're only able to get, to apply for this money and possibly get this money if they have, if they expand their restaurant by 50% of their existing square footage within the downtown area, which was from North Walnut to Eucla down Benita, right? And then it's Arrow Highway on San Dimas Avenue to First Street. And I like that area. I think that's a great job. Is it feasible to make that request for existing restaurants? Do we think that they have the room to develop their sites 50% more than what they already have? Or is there another way to include existing restaurants and support them?
Sure, Councilmember Protakos. So the goal of the program is for restaurant expansion and to bring in new restaurants. We can go a different route to or include in those requirements that not only if they can't expand their square footage, because I know that some of the restaurants aren't capable of doing that. If they expand their service of hours, then that would create new jobs, because the whole goal is for job creation. So if they expand their service hours, then they could hire a full-time equivalent employee for that. So that's something that we could add to the guidelines if that's your desire. And they would just have to increase their service hours by 30%. So hopefully, you know, they'll be able to stay open later and then hire employees for that.
I think, I think that's a fantastic idea. I know many of our downtown restaurants close early, and that may be by choice or because they just don't have the help to stay open later. I'm interested in knowing if council would have that desire to include that within this program so that we're able to help support more existing restaurants that may want the help.
Yes, I'm supportive of that.
Absolutely. One question, if that's okay?
Oh, please.
So on the expansion of existing restaurants, does that include outdoor space as well? For instance, if a restaurant wanted to, you know, add a permanent patio area?
For sure, yeah. Anything to increase their square footage. We could, we thought about maybe for the outdoor seating area, like assisting in some of the restaurants with that, so we can definitely do that.
Great, sounds good. I think the community definitely would, would like to see some outdoor seating at our restaurants.
I'm very content, but I would, do I make a motion to include that verbiage in the guidelines?
That would be an appropriate motion and to also approve staff recommendation.
Okay.
May I ask a question before?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just for clarification, so the total amount, I believe, of the grant that we got was, was it?
The total amount funded to this program was 70,000.
And so basically, because we do it in chunks of 35,000, so there's really two grants total. Is that correct?
Correct. So for CDBG requirements, it's for every $35,000 you award a restaurant, you have to hire one full-time equivalent person. So we could do one restaurant and assist them with 70,000, as long as they hire two full-time equivalents.
That was my question, is can it go to just one, or does it have to be two different ones? And then the last question I have are, are there any candidates in mind within that space that we think are going to apply? I'm sure that these grants are kind of use-it-or-lose-it type of things. So do we feel confident that there are restaurants that meet the criteria that we think are going to?
So our goal is to get new restaurants in, but, you know, we did meet with the chamber to try to get some ideas from them of existing restaurants that may be able to use the funding and then for, if they had any idea of any new restaurants that were coming in. So once we get these guidelines approved, then we could really start marketing the program and going out there and doing more research to find out if there's any current restaurants that could use it or any new restaurants that are coming in.
But we're basically just talking one or two businesses within the entire city of San Dimas?
For this fiscal year, yes, because we only allocated the 70,000. If it's a program that we, you know, see that it's really working, then we could allocate more of our CDBG funds. Our CDBG funds are so limited. You know, like I said, I think we got 166,000, and since I've been here, that's been going down every year. So, you know, with the limited funding that we have, we can just use it to try to help as many as we can.
I think there was something in here, too, that said if there was a lot of applicants, it was at the city discretion to maybe change some of the limits of the amount of funds that somebody could get. Is that correct, or did I read that wrong?
Well, so it's based on rehabbing the restaurant, right, either if it's existing or new. So it's up to 35,000 for one full-time employee, and that's based on their need. So if we have an existing restaurant that wants to, like, let's say remodel their kitchen, and then, so then they can be open more hours, then it just depends how much money they need to do that.
And then those decisions come out of your shop?
We have our CDBG housing consultant. He's going to be running the program. He does this right now at another city. It's been very successful. He's brought in, I think, six or eight different restaurants into their downtown area. So he's done a really good job with it, so we're going to be using him for that. He's already here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Well, I would make the motion to include, to approve staff's recommendation with the inclusion of existing restaurants can expand their hours by 30% in order to qualify to apply. Does that sound about right? That's my motion.
I just wrote it down to expand their service hours by 30% or more.
Okay.
I second.
Any further conversation? Any further questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item number six. Eric Nakano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Parks and Recs Director, good evening.
Good evening.
So I think the question I have with this, this is regarding some bids that we had received to do some work at Horse Thief Canyon. We received five bids altogether, all of which were disqualified for different reasons. And staff's recommendation is to reject them because of that and then reopen the bid process. So I think the question I have is, if we, I assume that there was a lot of follow-up with these companies to try to get their applications complete, which is why most of them were rejected. Do we, do we anticipate these same companies applying again? And what happens in that scenario if staff has tried to get them to do everything the first time and they didn't? What's our confidence that we'll get a different group, or if the same group will actually follow through? I just wondered if you could articulate a little bit more why a new bid process would resolve maybe some of the issues that we saw the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Nakano for the, or Mayor Protem Nakano for the question. Typically, this is not uncommon. So when you have, I don't know if I would call them bid irregularities, but after a bid, what the contractors typically contact the city, and I think this is true of a lot of bids. And what the contractors sometimes try to do is they'll point out some of the shortcomings of their competitors and make the case as to why the competitor shouldn't get the contract, but we should. So my, that's what happened in this case. So we have five bidders. There's no way to know for sure. My guess is that most of those five bidders will probably submit a bid again for the same project. And it's entirely possible that we would get a new bidder as well. There's no definitive way to know until we actually post, repost the project and then accept the bids.
I think what I'm really getting at is, if we do the same thing again and we get the same people bidding, do we expect a different outcome the second time around?
Yes, we do. Now I understand your question. Thank you. We, we expect a different outcome because I think staff will communicate better. And we've also, looking at some of the things that the bidders didn't understand, we've discussed internally, and we know how to make those more clear so that we have a better result.
Got it. Okay, no further questions.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any further question? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Hearing none. Motion carries four, zero for item number six on the consent calendar. We'll move to item number eight on the consent calendar. Mr. Nakano.
I'm Madam Director. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor Protem Nakano.
So I'm looking at the staff report on the fleet vehicles, and I wondered if you could walk us through the totals, because I was having some trouble getting the totals to equal the amount of 604,251. And it's probably my fault in terms of reading it incorrectly. So I wondered if we could walk through it together. The table on page 258 also seemed to indicate different totals. So the total amount that was said was 604,251. And so when I went through, we have, when I look at under fiscal impact, we have parking enforcement vehicles at 170. We have backhoe for 220K. We've got the, we've got a Ford for 89K. This is 80,000 plus the outfitting. We've got 56K for another Ford and 120K for the crack seal machine. And when I added everything up, it ended up coming closer to 655 rather than 604. So I wondered if you could just help me understand how those numbers arrived at the total.
Okay, so, so the backhoe was actually 177, 260?
Okay.
Okay, and then we're?
Why is it in the one paragraph it said crack, oh wait, crack seal machine? I'm looking at that. Yeah, so 170 for the, oh, I see, I think. Well, I think here it says the Quinn backhoe has an adopted budget of 220. Okay. So you're saying it's 170. Okay, that's probably why it was off. Okay, got it.
So that's, that's one of them. The, we're also asking it 604 plus a contingency?
If the backhoe is 170, why, why does it say in the first line, replace the parking enforcement vehicles that have quoted ex, total expense of 170?
What paragraph are you on, on page 250?
Under fiscal impact.
Right.
The adopted 224, 25 budget includes a 180, an account to replace the parking enforcement vehicles that have a quoted total expense of 170, 5.16, 17 cents for vehicle purchase and outfitting, producing a fund balance savings of 9,483.
Okay, so, so the, there's, there's three parking enforcement vehicles at 45,826.145 each. So there's three of those. That's where you get, that's where the... Okay, plus there's, so, so this, the table is a little confusing because there's, we broke up the outfitting and the parking, the cost of the vehicles themselves. So if you look on tape, on page 258, it gives you a better breakdown of, these are the costs of the, of the vehicles, and then plus of their outfitting. So, so... So the 170 is for three of the, the plug-in hybrids, plus the cost of their outfitting. So...
So the plug-in hybrids are, and we have the downtown Ford, I guess. So the total amount of 604, are you adding the, are you adding the 520? I'm just trying to understand, like, how these numbers all came up to 604?
So we added the 243.
Okay.
If you look on page 258, 243 for the, all of the, all of the Fords.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's just the, that's the cost of the vehicle only. Okay, and then the Quinn backhoe is 175, 645.
Yeah.
The, the Hucker crack seal machine is 110, 426. So for just the vehicles alone, it's 529.
I see, yep, yep, I see, okay.
Okay, and then the cost of outfitting for C-Tech amount to 65,000. And then the BEACOM is 9,690. So those should all add up to 604.
Got it, okay. Yep, they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry, could you, we have X amount of vehicles. When, on the first thing, it says downtown Ford. On the first thing, it says downtown Ford. You got unit 45, unit 46, unit 52. The next one, you have the same thing listed as new.
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
So that's going to be a new housing vehicle. For the, when the housing employee was hired, they allocated funds for a vehicle for that person to conduct their interviews in the field. So what we did is we brought that, carried that over into this year. We appropriated it for this budget. So for this purchase item.
Hey, then when we talk about outfitting, the plug-in hybrid, hybrid outfitting cost, what does the outfitting consist of?
Okay, so if you look at our code compliance vehicles right now, they'll have the light bars on them. Okay, you can see that from the outside. That's a safety feature. Those vehicles are also used at, for the parking enforcement. So it's very important that the parking enforcements have the flashers. So that's part of it. There's also on the inside of the vehicles, there's a mount for the laptop and then there's interior lighting. And that's from C-Tech. So there's some, some of those applications have structural welding and that has to, and wiring, electrical wiring that has to be done. Almost all of our vehicles are outfitted by C-Tech. So all the parts are the same. All of the flashers are pretty much the same. So when you go from one vehicle to another, they're all, the buttons are on the same location. So that's the C-Tech. And then also what we have is all of our vehicles are equipped with radios. And that's the Bearcom portion of the outfitting.
Okay. How many parking enforcement people do we put out at night? How many, do we have three people out there driving cars around at night?
That I'd have to defer to the Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council. Louis Torrico, Director of Community Development. So we have, at night, we have three officers that do work the evening shifts. And we also have some that work during the day and on weekends as well.
What time? The last part you said?
We also have some that work during the day on weekdays and weekends as well. During the day.
Hmm. That's new to me. I haven't seen many parking people out in the daytime. But I guess I might have missed something. I'll sit down and talk with you about it later. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion on item number eight?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries four zero. Okay, that'll be the end of the consent calendar. We'll move on to other business. Introduce ordinance 1310, approving municipal code text amendment 24-6 to amend chapter 8.40, camping and storage on private and public property to be aligned with the recent court decisions and consistent with the Governor's Executive Order N-1-24, along with the associated cleanup items and determination exempt from SEQA under SEQA guidelines, 15061B3. Louis?
Yes. Good evening again, Mayor. Louis Torrico, Director of Community Development. So earlier in the year, the City Council approved two ordinances. One was for no camping citywide and the other one was for transit facilities. They were both put in place to give the city tools to assist the code enforcement and the Sheriff's Department with enforcement regarding camping, loitering, and storage of personal property in the city. When the ordinances were adopted, they were done in compliance with the, with recent court decisions. More recently, in June 28th of this year, there was a new court decision that changed the law. And so we're making a change now to be in compliance with that change. And essentially, when we adopted the ordinance, in order to do a citywide prohibition, you had to make shelter available. And we do have a partnership with Locata where we provide four beds for services. And in addition to the other services that Locata provides, we do have four beds available. And in instances when these beds were used and there was no shelter available, you could only prohibit camping in certain areas in the city. So the ordinance included a list of prohibited places that included parks, city facilities, anywhere along Bonita Highway and Arrow Highway. So that was included in the original ordinance. With this recent court decision, the Supreme Court ruled that you don't have to provide shelter to provide, to prohibit citywide camping. So we're amending the ordinance to remove that, that list of prohibited public places because now we can enforce it whether or not shelter is available. I do want to make it clear that just because the Supreme Court said that we don't have to provide shelter, we still have the contract with Locata. Our intent is still to continue that contract and provide those services, including the four beds for these types of services. The other change was in light of that court hearing, Governor Newsom signed into order an executive order that provided some guidelines for cities how to deal with encampments. These are not legal binding requirements, but the city attorney felt that it'd be wise to implement these into our ordinance. So these changes also reflect that. And those changes reflect what it is. Two main changes is regarding noticing. Our current ordinance, we provide a 24-hour notice when we're clearing encampments. Those guidelines recommend that cities provide a 48-hour notice. So we'll be doing that. And the other change was that it recommended that cities, when they remove personal property, they store property for 60 days. Our current ordinance has 90 days. So we'll be making that change to be aligned with those recommendations by the Governor. And reducing those timelines would help public works in regards to when items are stored. If we do keep them for longer periods, it could create an issue when you're collecting, you know, several different properties. So reducing it to 60 days will also help with that storage issue. So that's what those changes are proposed tonight. Again, it's just to be consistent with the recent court decisions and with recommendations released by the Governor's Executive Order. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. I am so proud of our city that we are partners with Locata. I think it's an amazing thing. We are not just a city trying to move people around, tell people no. We are not heartless. We are offering help and services. So proud to be a part of that. And it also gives us opportunities for other grants and things like that, which is amazing. When I first read the 24-hour notice going to 48, I kind of went, oh, gosh, why? And then as I read through the report, I understood that giving the extra notice is probably going to cut down how much that we will have to go back and clean up and store. So I understand that and I am in full support of it. I wanted to share just a little story that I'm a big supporter of the MySanDemus app. I practice what I preach and that's kind of the first place that I go to if I see something, see something, say something. And there was an instance where I saw an encampment and I reported it through the MySanDemus app. And Locata went out and offered the individual services and they said yes. And it just felt great. So I want to share with the public, see something, say something, that MySanDemus app does work. And, you know, we are a city that is truly trying to help people. So I think, you know where I stand. I'm in support of this ordinance.
Thank you. Louis, I just want to ask a question. Maybe it didn't have anything to do with us, but then again, it might, I know it involved our Sheriff's Department. I received several phone calls last week concerning our sheriffs up in the foothills, dealing with the homeless and taking down encampments and stuff. Do we have any involvement in that?
We did. Our code enforcement team was up there, also with our housing team. They partnered up with the Sheriff's Department and then I believe the City of Laverne to go up there off of San Demas Canyon Road. I believe it's something that they, we lasted, it was just a little over a year ago. We went up there, my understanding is there was a couple encampments that they found and contacted these individuals and made them aware that there's services available to them, but also made them aware that it was, they were trespassing. So they couldn't be up there.
Did the sheriffs recover property there or did we recover the property and have to house it?
I'd have to, I don't have the answer to that. I'd have to get back to you on that.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions?
No question. As proud as you are that we are so engaged with Locata and I am as well, I'm also proud that our city is at the forefront of changing our ordinance to be in compliance with the new court rulings and directives from the state. You know, I think it's very easy for cities to be slow to react to these things so that they're not the, you know, first one to have to create these new rules and see how they play out and see what challenges there may be. I think in regards to the homelessness crisis, and it truly is a crisis, our state by and large, not just San Demas, but the state as a whole, has made their opinions pretty clear that they felt that communities were left behind and that the individuals that are on the street have more rights than everyday citizens. And I really, truly do feel like that was the case. So I'm very proud that we're adjusting our ordinance to be in full compliance with the new Supreme Court ruling. As some may or may not know, I went from my desk job at work as a detective and now I'm pushing around a patrol car in a black and white now. And that means that my schedule's a little more rigid for meetings like tonight, but it also means that I'm out there dealing with patrol calls. And just from the past couple of weeks, I can tell you that my experience has been about 75% of the calls that I'm going on, just anecdotally, are related to homelessness and the homelessness crisis. And it was such a stark contrast for me because it's been five years since I've been out in the field in that capacity. And it's just such a huge, huge change in that amount of time. And it was very, while we see it every day, while we're driving down the street, it's another thing entirely to have to respond to those calls over and over and over and over again all day long. So again, thank you for all of the work that we've put into these ordinances. I'm very proud of them. I think the community is going to really appreciate all that staff has done to make this a, you know, the best ordinance that we can make out of it. So, thank you.
And if I may add to that, we always wanted to take the approach of being both compassionate and accountable. And so it's not just Locata that has provided excellent service. Our Sheriff's Department, especially our CAT team unit, our Housing Division and the staff that are there that individually engage with folks to try to go above and beyond and to connect them to resources, especially mental health resources, which is very challenging. I think all around, we've tried to take the approach of solving the problem for good and not just patching it up.
Yeah. I think we've done a really good job of balancing all of the different facets of this because it's not a one-dimensional problem, that's for sure. So thank you.
You know, earlier today about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I was approached by a community member, a business owner over off of Euclid. And he wanted, his sole reason to stop me was to tell me that he believed that the city, as well as the sheriffs, were doing a great job concerning our homeless situation. In his business complex, he said it's down. He seems, he seems driving around, he's a neighbor of the community. He lives over off of Euclid and he pointed out the fact that he's been calling the Sheriff's Department and calling the city and saying the things like, this is probably not something you're hearing very much of, but you guys are doing a hell of a job and we truly, truly appreciate it. I speak to a lot of the business people in this little complex and they're noticing that these people aren't sleeping in my doorway. And that he was very, very positive about where we're going. And we talked about Locata and we talked about a few other things and our deputies and our staff members taking, being very proactive. And this is the appropriate time for something like that to come up. And I think the entire City Council recognizes that you guys are doing all a good job. And Chris, I'm noticing that we don't have a representative from the Sheriff's Department here tonight, but if you would convey that to the captain, those, how the council appreciates what they're doing and, but don't, don't give up. Keep working.
I will let him know, but he asked not to be here as he has an extremely early meeting tomorrow and he didn't want him staying late and then having to not sleep before his meeting tomorrow. So that's why he's not here.
10 o'clock's not really early for a meeting. All right. I'll entertain a motion to read by title and then introduce ordinance 1310.
So moved.
Ordinance 1310, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Demas, County of Los Angeles, California, amending chapter 8.40, camping and storage on private and public property to be aligned with recent court decisions and consistent with the Governor's Executive Order N-1-24, along with associated cleanup items.
I move that we waive further reading and adopt municipal code text, ordinance 1310, municipal code text amendment 24-06.
Sorry, Councilmember, waive further reading and introduce?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Waive further reading, introduce ordinance 1310, approving municipal code text amendment 24-06.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries four zero. Okay. We'll move on to oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes. Ours may be determined by the chair.
Here again, Mayor. I have to announce that if anybody wants to comment by phone, the phone number and the meeting ID codes are on the face of the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing nobody jump up, we'll close that. We'll go to city reports. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just have one report. Edison has confirmed that they will start doing relocation of utilities at the San Demas Loop with a number of different improvements that need to occur out there. With the work required, San Demas Avenue from Calle Solano to the intersection of San Demas Avenue is projected to be closed until the end of December. So we will make sure that we're notifying the residents out there. Edison may be putting up a signage, signage out there and we'll put this on our website.
Thank you. Any questions, the City Manager? The City Attorney?
I have no reports, Mayor.
But we will be going into renewed closed session after this meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Members of the council, councilmen, council, council members' reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency. Hearing none. We'll move on to council, City Council requests for future items. Mr. Nakano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item I'd like to request at our next City Council meeting for discussion. As many community members have expressed to all of us, there's a great desire for pickleball in this community. And I've been in discussions with both you, Mr. Mayor, as well as with our Parks and Recs Director. And I'd like to propose that we discuss options in terms of courts that would be suitable for pickleball as well as cost estimates so that we can arrive at a decision as to what next steps there may be to bring pickleball to San Demas.
Anyone wishing to support?
I'd be interested to hear about that.
Thank you. So you'll agendize that for the next meeting?
We will put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Any further, Eric?
Thank you.
I have nothing tonight. Mr. Mayor?
I would like to add for a future discussion on our next meeting agenda, the San Demas High School Homecoming Parade. That is coming up potentially on October 18th. So it is important for it to be on the next agenda. And I just want to discuss cost and communication and organization moving forward because this is an annual tradition. And I don't want us trying to figure this all out every August.
Thank you. It is, it has become a tradition. I can remember years back when there was lots of discussion, are we going to have this? And it was going to be a one-time event, the parade. And it now got to be 15th year. So it has become a community event. You're looking at me like you want to say something.
No, I thought you were going to, but we need a second, Councilmember, to say yes. We'd like to see.
I will.
I figured. Thank you.
Okay. Is that okay with you? All right. Sorry. Okay, so you're done?
I am done.
Or are you finished? Or are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay. You know, I said this probably the last couple, two or three meetings, I, I want us, I want to commend the Chamber of Commerce. It seems like every week I'm going to one or two ribbon cuttings, and you know what? It's, 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 it's very heartening to see the activities of the community, that people are coming along, they want to be a part of the chamber, they want to be a part of the city, and then when you go to a place like, um, Exchange Place across from the bank, where it was the old Wally Nikowitz building, owned by Buzz Shoemaker, uh, and then we, now we have that new law firm there, and then we got, now there's a new beauty shop there, a new antique shop, and, you know, all of these things are new, the building's been redone, everything's fine, and you know what? When you go there and you talk to people coming there, you know what they're talking about? They're talking about the new sidewalk that the city went out and fixed up the sidewalk along there, and had to do, do some piping and Public Works, I believe. They were absolutely fabric acid that, fiber, whatever the word is. They were unbelievable that how the city could do that in that short a time, and I know all the pre-stuff was already done, but the physical labor portion of it, week, 10 days, and people are talking about, they, people are walking down that sidewalk, talking about how quickly the sidewalk became a part of the community, and I do want to point out to Public Works that, that people are very, very fascinated about the quality of the work that's being done. Earlier, I spoke about a guy named Larry who approached me today about the homeless. His original thing that he wanted to talk to me was about the work, work going on in the community down Euclid, down on Bonita, and how quickly it's being done by the vendors and everything, and there, people are noticing, we're getting the job done, and your peoples need to be commended for that, along with those vendors, and, and you're holding them to task, and I, I want to make sure that we all understand that. I also want to make comment that a week ago, we didn't do so good. Our San Dimas High School guys played one heck of a water polo game. Unfortunately, they didn't come up to the, that doggone Bonita place over there, they seemed to, uh, must, I don't know what they give them in the water, but they, uh, our kids played a heck of a game, and we, Council, Councilmember Protakis and I were there, and it became, uh, it's, I didn't know that we called something the Fish Bowl. I had no compre, he kept calling me and talking to me about the Fish Bowl, didn't, couldn't figure it out, but eventually I figured it out. These guys are like a bunch of fish when they're out there playing, but, but they did a goo, good job of representing San Dimas, and my, my hat's off to the water polo boys, water polo team that represented San Dimas High School. There are so many things going on in our community, all we have to do is smile, okay? Because people out there recognize what we're doing, you know? Naturally, you know, music in the park's gone for right now, it'll be back in a year or so, but there are people out there coming to Farmer's Market, and there's still a lot of folks, just because they're not out there watching the movies or listening to the music, they're coming to Farmer's Market, they're sitting out there in, in community park having, you know, picnic lunches or dinners and stuff like that. If you don't come down and, and you haven't been out there, you're missing something, so think about that. And I think what we'll do is, unless somebody has an objection, we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll move on to the closed session so that, uh, we can all get home in, in a proper time. So, do I, I have a motion for adjournment?
Some moved.
I'm coming, you're so fast. Thank you, we'll call this meeting adjourned, and we'll see you in two weeks.